Okay, let's go ahead and call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Tuesday, February 4th, 2025, and see if you can take the role.
Okay, just check online real quick. Ms. Austin?
Present.
Mr. Adams?
Present.
Ms. Hubka?
Here.
Mr. Montiel?
Here.
Mr. Ruddle is not online yet. Oh, Mr. Kaplan's not here yet. Mr. Martinez?
Here.
Mr. Renson is here?
Here.
And Chair Hagerty?
Here.
And we have a new alternate, Ms. Cesario?
Present.
Welcome.
Okay, we have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the January 22nd meeting. Do I have a motion? So moved.
I'll second that.
If we could have a vote. I was waiting for no, just to slide in. Any discussion, I guess, before, and now, okay, good. Okay, if we can vote?
Okay. Ms. Austin?
Epstein.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hubka?
Aye.
Mr. Montiel?
Aye.
Mr. Kaplan? Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Renson?
Yes.
And Chair Hagerty?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. This is Stephen on.
Stephen, let me get Stephen. Stephen was just voting on the minutes. Do you vote to approve? Stephen, can you hear us?
Yeah, it's really low. The volume is really low, like last time. Let me see if I can hear you. There. Is that better?
We can hear you great.
We can hear you, yes.
Yeah, there, I can hear you guys.
Perfect. We're voting on the minutes. How do you vote?
Um, aye.
Thank you.
I read them, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Next item on the agenda is public forum. If anybody from the public wishes to address the commission regarding items not on the agenda, no? Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Well, then we can move on to the study session. Sir Bobroll, if you can provide us your update on the conference of plan.
Can you hear me? Great. All right. All right, so we're gonna, this is a stay session to make a continuation on our January 22nd discussion on the area assessment policies. And we're doing it a little bit different this week to see if we can make more ground, but I think we can, because I think, I think that really, that first area was the hardest, quite frankly. So, so tonight's agenda will go through the remaining area assessment policies, hopefully flagged as questionable or not relevant in yellow or red. And then, if we get through all that, we will then move on to PCC member's choice on any policies flagged as still relevant or green. And then, thirdly, this might be the fun part of the whole session, is to ask members to offer up new policies for each area. All right, just to reboot what we were doing, 2016 plan included 13 park-based neighborhood maps. We used Denver example as a guide. Then there was a grassroots effort to create unrelated neighborhood maps based on historical subdivision plat maps. That resulted in 40 neighborhoods identified and mapped, and we decided that was way too many. So, we thought even 13 was probably too many, quite frankly. So, we're doing, we're going down, we're changing things, not to neighborhoods, but sectors, area assessments, sector assessments. And we're going from 13 to six, and so far, right now, we have totally laid out those six as northwest, northeast, central, near south, far south, and southwest. And so, our task at this point in time is to redistribute the existing neighborhood policies according to the new geographical areas, and then do an initial staff evaluation of each policy, whether they are still relevant, or there are questions, or should they be removed. So, we have done northwest. Maybe go back, I don't think we'll call for new policies right now. So, let's go into northeast. And this is the area between north of 285, well, actually, north of the medical district, north of Floyd Avenue, and east of Broadway. So, the first questionable policy was provide additional pedestrian crossings along Logan Street to access Bates Logan Park. There are crossings installed at Bates and Cornell. But I was thinking, I was working on this today, actually, and I was thinking that a way to maybe enhance this is to look at this as an exploration of improvements, safety enhancement improvements that can be done to those intersections, rather than, right now, they're just cross, marked crosswalks. And maybe there's some kind of, you know, a pedestrian refuge that could be added on there, or maybe there could be some kind of flashing signal type thing. There are different things out there. So, I think if I was to, I'm thinking about revising this to say something to, that, you know, acknowledging that these crossings are there, but also the possibility that there could be some safety improvements as well. Any discussions on that one?
Yeah, what would be your general term for traffic safety improvements? What's your, we do have a, you know, a whole committee now for traffic. I'm sure they'd love to take a go at, to be specific, and we don't need to be specific. So, what would be your, would it just, this is the area where we need safety, because we could go through a lot of the city doing that, you know. But this was identified as a specific area because it's by the park.
I think that's why it is. I think it's, it's the park, access to the park was the important key there. And Logan Street is busy. I'd probably add to that language, including some other busy streets that you might have to cross, such as Downing and Dartmouth. And I would probably just leave it as explore safety enhancement improvements, or something like that, because I don't know what they could be, or I have some ideas, but I don't, we can't necessarily, we don't want to be so specific that we are pigeonholed, so.
I'm fine with that.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I mean, it's a busy road. It's not very obvious where people are going to cross, so something to be done.
Okay. All right, let's move to BL5. Enhance the community gateway along Broadway at Yale Avenue for regional recognition through signage, urban design, or key destination. And the reason why I just think that this is not going to be a high priority for the city is that we have probably the nicest, most memorable entry monument for the city is already there, called Leaves of Grass. And I remember one time photographing that a number of years back, and some people came up to me and said, "You like that?" They weren't too all, they didn't think that was, they weren't having it, they weren't, they didn't like it. But I'm kind of guessing they're a minority, because it's still there.
One of the comments that I thought was interesting for this one was providing more signage at the downtown edge and not the city limits. That was in some of the comments from the open house, which I thought was an interesting kind of perspective of, you know, whether we want to add on to some of those things. I think we have a great downtown Broadway corridor, and there's some enhancements already, but it was just an interesting thought that I thought maybe we could, maybe replace this with that.
That makes a lot of sense, like that. Let's talk about BL6, identify locations and partnerships for a community garden. And so, I was, there is a community garden established at Charles Hay. However, I'm not sure if it's really open to everybody. It might just be open to kids and families that are part of that school. And I did contact Parks and Rec about community gardens, and they are interested in potential new community gardens in other locations of the city. Their priority area is going to be south of 285, because they already have, of course, their one that they sponsored is at Depot Park. So, they would like to, you know, their first priority would be down south. And I also, and they also mentioned maybe up at northwest Inglewood, up at Baker Park as well. So, the one thing that I imagined, or what came to me while I was working on this the other day, was that these community gardens are, policies are in all the areas, and I'm thinking that maybe there's going to be a policy area that is citywide.
I'm just like, hello, are you, it may be, it may not be open to the public, but I would contact Joshua School. They might want to do a community garden, because that's the autistic school, and that might be something that's, I don't know that much about it. Might be good therapy for them, who knows? They do have kind of a closed campus. They shut their doors for obvious reasons. I mean, they've got that gate and stuff like that. But anyway, just a thought.
Okay.
I was just gonna say, we can, I don't think it needs to be specific to this area. You know, it's like you said, that's a commu, a citywide, I don't know how you say that, in a citywide desirable. There you go.
Okay. All right, BL7, partner with the hospitals to invest in programs to rehabilitate older housing and offer down payment assistance for homes in ready walking distance to the hospital complex. This was inspired by the Cleveland Clinic in Cleveland, Ohio. Cleveland, the Cleveland Clinic is a nonprofit research hospital in east Cleveland, close into the downtown core area. We are a little bit different situation. However, the hospitals have become more concerned recently regarding workforce affordability. So, I kind of looked into this a little bit. I found a brochure on it, and the program includes not only that Cleveland Clinic, but also includes the city of Cleveland. It also includes a Cleveland Foundation and a nonprofit housing development corporation. And I think what they do is they contribute, all these groups contribute into this fund. And basically, there's this $20,000 down forgivable loan that will be forgiven after five years living there. It's a, it's this extra little thing to get you that enough for the down payment. It's like, and that is something that I think, now, one thing I would have to say is, I don't know if Swedish would be interested in this, because Swedish is a very corporate entity anymore. And they're pretty ruthless about things. And I'm not sure you can really, you know, they have to answer to this corporate headquarters in Nashville. But Craig Hospital could be very interested in this. So, I think we should keep it, especially with now that we've had our affordable housing task force. This could be something that, that task force could, might want to run with. So, I think we should probably keep it in there. Any discussion?
Doesn't one of the hospitals have some sort of, were they buying apartments around there for their, for people to live? Is that right? Or is it for families of people? I'm not sure.
It's for temporary housing for, uh, long-term.
Yes, I think they do have arrangements with certain properties to house as, you know, probably first come, first, you know, they have preference, some kind of preferences to rent there for short-term stays. Yes, and it's, I think it's usually their families, because a lot of times, these people, these patients are going to be there for quite a while.
Yeah, it's like a Ronald McDonald House sort of thing. And you, is that what it is?
Yeah, that's what I've heard about that.
Okay, yeah, I just remember hearing something. Thanks.
Sure.
I have a question about this. This seems to be fairly specific. Is the general idea here to add more affordable housing for people who work in the wellness district? And if so, I would love a much more general focus, because there's a lot of options, there's a lot of things that might suit, you know, that might lead to that end. You know, we're calling out specifically down payment assistance in rehab of older homes, but, you know, there's probably lots of other options. If that's really what this is targeting, it's really supporting work, the workforce at, in the wellness center.
I'm also kind of curious, just to focus on hospitals, I get it, they're the big employers in the area, but does this, it sort of has the sense that other people wouldn't be eligible to rent or buy a house if the hospital's involved? And I think it gets very odd to think of a hospital sort of owning public housing or having priority over other people. It doesn't seem fair.
And that, I'd be a little concerned about some of the apartment purchasing, that that is expanding, where all of a sudden, they've got control over those spaces more. But it sounds like this is down payment assistance for the individuals, which I think I'd be in support of, in a general speaking, to be able to provide places for nurses or, you know, young, young people that are working there. I think the $20,000 might be, I don't know if that's going to be enough to really do anything at this point, is kind of part of the issue. Michelle first, then Brenda?
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't at the last meeting, so I'm a little fuzzy on what we're trying to accomplish here. So, it sounds to me like we're trying to, do we, are we trying to rewrite BL7 and make it a little more general rather than specific? Is that what we're trying to do here?
It kind of sounds like that's the, what the-
That was my suggestion.
The suggestion is on the table.
Right. And, and I think even the comment needs to be a little more general, because obviously, Cleveland, Ohio is not, I mean, it does say inspired by, but you just said that the hospital is not going to do that, do the $20,000 and all that sort of stuff. So, maybe we need to make that general as well.
Real quick, Brenda, before we go. So, what we're doing is going through, basically, the previous policies that were in the comp plan, and then just whichever ones we feel need to be adjusted, we can adjust, which ones have been completed. So, obviously, feel free to jump back in, but it took us a minute to get up to speed last time, so I understand the question. Yeah, go ahead, Brenda.
Well, my question is, I'm sorry, it's to Aaron. You said be more specific or be more inclusive? And you were on the committee, so what else can we add to this besides down payment assistance?
And I don't, I don't intend to tie this specifically with the Affordable Housing Task Force, but like, I guess I was curious to know if this was really trying to get at a larger issue of supplying more housing in close proximity to that workforce center for those employees. And if that is the case, let's add, I mean, let's make it a little more general, so that, I mean, it's not just focusing on rehab and down payment assistance, but are there other options that should be included? If that is ultimately the goal, let's state the goal, rather, so that way we can include more solutions.
So, what I think you're saying is, well, we have two elements. We have homeownership, but we also have housing availability. I mean, they have a lot of duplexes there, which I'm fine with. It's supposed to be built up. Offer down payment assistance and rental assistance? I don't know.
Again, I think I would get back, get back to, if this is for the purpose of supplying workforce housing for that, then, I mean, I don't know if we need to be so specific in the comp plan. It's like, consider every possible solution to achieve this goal, right? That's, that's kind of what I'm getting to.
Are you okay with it being associated with the hospital complex?
Yeah, okay. I mean, I think that's a great goal. It's a huge employment center. It's the first responders, you know, workforce folks that we want to live in our community. I think it's-
Yeah. And that kind of ran through my head, too, is like, well, could it be what other groups might, that be, it could be included in there that would be important? And I thought about, well, what about city employees? Or what about the public school teachers? And then, the other thought I had about this was, why should it just be that area? Why should it be just, because when I looked at the map for the Cleveland Clinic's program, it's a lot larger area. So, it's like, it was like two and a half miles by two and a half miles, and it's like, you know, why not just throw it open to all of Inglewood?
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm getting at. It's like, what was the original intent here, right? What was the original thought? Because I think that's one great thing, is housing for the, but, yeah.
I mean, I think the intent was walking distance to the hospital for, and for workforce housing, but I like the idea of expanding it to a larger area as well. And that's kind of what I was getting at with my questions, if that makes sense. John, are you good then? Okay. All right.
All right, BL9, invest in park improvements at Bates Logan Park, and I think that has recently undergone in some proven projects, 21 and 22. And I looked at, through the park bond, and that park is not on the list. So, I think we're, we're at a good point right now of just being stable. So, we'll probably just remove this one.
John, I did have a couple of general questions, looking at these maps, and I think might be a good place to jump in and ask them, if that's okay?
Sure.
I, it's a lot more clear on the maps printed where the distinguishment is, but there's still, I feel like, a lot of lines on where we're talking about for each one of these. So, I started marking up some things, like for the medical district, and then I'm like, oh, wait, that's not in there. So, if we can get these more defined on which areas the northwest area is, or northeast area, and all that, I think that would be really helpful for whenever it goes into the final packet, just as people are starting to look through them. And then, one of the other questions I was struggling with is I was looking at, with the residential transition area, what does that mean? Or for that matter, the mixed use, you know. I'm not sure if they were defined someplace else. I didn't see it. I didn't look all that hard. But, you know, what is that supposed to be?
That is the area that is the big question mark.
Right.
And so, you know, on one hand, you have stable neighborhood, residential neighborhoods that you don't expect to change. You don't, that's the policy. And then, you have, you know, on the other side, you have this commercial corridor like Broadway, that is, this is where business activity, big business happens, and new businesses, and new housing, and big, fairly, you know, large-scale housing. And then, you have these residential transition districts that are kind of in between there. And occasionally, some things have occurred that, where the market wants to move in a certain way, or there's some kind of problem property that can't be developed. And the big case in point that really inspired these transition zones was this Shriners project that was located, that's located at Floyd and Logan, I believe it is. And it was a former Shriners clubhouse, and no one could do anything with it. And it just sat there for many years. And, because it was R1 zone district, but it was right up against a more denser, higher-density district closer downtown. And somebody, somebody who had a really long timeline horizon was able to slowly purchase, in addition to that, they purchased other properties to the north to make a big enough area for a planned unit development. And so, the, this is what, these are the kind of things that we're kind of trying to look for as saying that this could be something that the planning commission might need to take a look at down the road for some kind of change, for some kind of zoning adjustments.
And I think that's where the key comes in. This is not a zoning change. That's not what we're doing here. So, it does feel like it projects a little bit, and I'm wondering if that, if it's a necessity to have in there. I'm not sure if there's other thoughts on what people think, like whether it's a good thing to kind of identify these areas, or if it creates more questions and it does benefit.
I would, I would think that just with some definition there, because, I mean, the purpose of the comp plan, correct me if I'm wrong, is this is what we want to, these are the types of changes we want to see in our city, right? And these are the areas where we've defined, either, these are areas that are evolving or should evolve. And we're clearly saying, this is where the focus should be. So, when we're writing up these, you know, these policies or these initiatives, they're strategically focused on the areas that need something, right? So, I mean, I think that's an important distinction.
Yes, and, and I'm, I have to tell you that we will be most likely going farther than that soon, because there's all these legislative mandates from the state that is telling us to do that. So, these, these transitional areas, you know, they may expand.
And are you specifically talking about like transit-oriented development and things like that?
And if that's the case, and I'm not saying that we do this today, I think we should all look at the ones that are marked up and make sure we're in agreement with what is being shown, or at least we have some insight or some input on saying, is this the right area? Should there be adjustments? What if the changes already happened, like near the medical district, you know? Are those still the same kind of thing? So, I agree with what you're saying here, and I just want to make sure that everybody else is on the same page, because I think it can create some questions when it's, when it shows an area of change, you know, people get a little nervous.
We will, we will, there will be a point here in this presentation where I will be bringing up something in the medical district that actually, in our little, our public participation last time, was something that got a lot of, a lot of red dots. It's like a lot of green dots, too, but it's, it was, there was something, some of the language in there sparked significant concerns. So, and we will talk a little bit more about, and trying to maybe possibly define that a little more better, so that maybe, hopefully. Now, I know that maybe a lot of those concerns were like, you know, I just don't want to see any more at all. But, you know, we've zoned that, that place for a reason. So, and if it's zoned there, it won't happen in their neighborhood, so.
I think we also need to keep in mind that we're looking 20, 30, 40 years down the road, and how we need to make decisions today in order to make Inglewood better then.
Go ahead, Brenda.
Just one thing. I wonder if we shouldn't, basically, we're setting policy. We're not setting law, because we're not changing, but we're setting a policy, and this is our only really chance to do it. I'm wondering if we can't, just to go back to payment assistance, if we shouldn't have another, and maybe what we're going to do this at the end, pull everything out that we do think should be Inglewood-wide, a kind of different bucket, if you will. Yeah, are you keeping track of these buckets?
I started to do that. I think I, I haven't gotten through all of this stuff yet, but I pulled out, I've started putting a city, I put in a new category in my list of policies that was citywide, and I have taken the community gardens one and put it under there. And looking for others, there's going to be probably a few others like that, too.
Thanks.
Michelle?
Just a quick question. Why isn't all the way, Broadway, all the way up to the historic downtown Inglewood red with catalytic activity? It stops at-
It's part of the, the central area. It's next one, next map.
Right, but this part right here?
Yeah, next map.
Oh, okay.
And that's why I was, it's hard to tell the distinction between what areas are which, and that's kind of my question. I started doing the same thing.
Okay, because, yeah, the historic district, it, well, the ways, the dotted lines go all the way up to Dartmouth, so I don't know. I'm just curious as why more of- I'm just curious as why more of Broadway isn't red. So is it red everywhere else on the next ones?
I can speak to that. There's some areas that we noted in the staff report that say some of these areas are split into different sectors.
Okay.
Because we're not quite sure where they think they should all fall. So we're asking you.
So it's just a neighbor.
Thing should be cut off right at that line for this district or this sector. You know, that's the kind of the input that we want from you in council. There's other ones that are a lot. The separation is a lot clearer. I think in one of the far south sectors, it kind of separates one neighborhood. One neighborhood is separated by Santa Fe. That one makes a lot of sense to us, but there's some other ones where we're, we're just kind of on the fence of what, what area to put it in. So we've kind of put it in three or four different maps and then we'll let you guys kind of tell us where you think it belongs.
Comment on that.
So it's really red, but it's just not on this map. Okay, got it.
Could I suggest that these maps be not crop, I said crop them, but don't change the graphics. So we, you know, we should, we should see exactly what she's talking about with the same gradient that continues on the other side of Broadway should be visible on this map. And there should be an obvious border, a very heavy border around the top area we're talking about, but the graphic should not stop.
Yeah.
There should be a line around the city, but the city doesn't get chopped off and the map gets deleted, right? So just keep the graphic going, one master graphic and just crop the areas to the page and add a border around it.
Okay, I will try that.
And I guess maybe just to clarify, are you, there was an early question about we don't want to move these too much. We've got them kind of the way we like them, but we can tweak it a little bit, a block here, block there was kind of the discussion. When we were talking about the northeast, we discussed whether Cushing Park should really be part of northeast or if it should be you know, or in Manic for that matter, or they should be part of north, I'm sorry, northwest, or if they should be part of central or northeast. Are you wanting input on these boundaries? Because it looks like you've got them laid out, but it is a little, again, it's a little hard for me to determine exactly what you've laid out as your potential boundary. And so if that's the case, I think clarifying what you say is the boundary and then letting us mark that up if we think it should be changed. Is that reasonable? Or do you want to do that here?
It sounds like I need to work more on graphics. Sounds like I, what might be, maybe might be helpful is just a really large map that shows the whole city and with those boundaries and maybe, maybe with some other things to show you why we chose those boundaries. But it doesn't seem like, it, I, your input is good, but I don't think we're ready to really, we're having some troubles visualizing, I think. And you're telling me that. And so you've, and so you have given me suggestions about how to revisualize. So it sounds like I need to go back and, and work on that.
Well, and if we're not basing it on the neighborhoods, is having the neighborhoods too much busy in here? Or do we want to keep those in?
We feel yes, we feel yes, we feel that there, there are certain elements of the community who are, have fallen in love with these things and we must keep them in.
Okay.
Okay, well, then under Romans Park.
Chair, I just want to remind you, Stephen is online if you want to check in with him.
Thank you. Stephen, how you doing? I had thought about it and then blanked it.
Good.
Any questions, any thoughts?
No, just listening.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Roman Park, number four, partner with local elementary schools to promote and support this neighborhood asset. This originally struck me as kind of vague. Should the city be actively marketing this neighborhood through social media? Then I thought, well, maybe they could, maybe there would be some kind of, the city could work with the schools to develop some kind of flyer about that particular school that could be distributed, I don't know, to on our website or something like that to maybe to realtors. So yeah, it's very, it's kind of vague. What do you think about it?
The question, this is the old, what was in the old comp plan, right?
Yeah.
This was, you know, a long time before the park was rehabbed. So again, this is another park that's been since rehabbed. So I don't know if it's necessary unless anybody thinks that there is a problem with this park still.
I live right near it and I don't think there's anything wrong with it. I just don't understand why you would partner with a local elementary school to support Romans Park, which is, I mean, Charles Hay is connected to Bard Park, so I just don't get why a local elementary school has anything to do with it.
Well, I, I just to clarify, I think it's really not the park itself, but the neighborhood that that was representing. And I think the whole idea of this is to somehow play up this the school in that area to the general community, trying to say, hey, this is a great, this is a great place for you to buy a house. Because you can send your kids to this school because this school is so great. I think that's really what they're, the gist of this policy is. But so I, but should we be doing that?
Michelle, yeah.
I say scratch it. I don't think it's what we should be doing. I just think we just scratch this one if we can do that. Can we, can we cross it out and not include it?
If that's what the group.
I think that makes sense. And actually, can we go back to RP one as well? There wasn't one highlighted. Yeah. What are we talking about?
RP one is one of the ones that's green, so it's not going to be in the slides to talk about, right?
I, I understand that, but I don't think it should be in there.
Well, I know, but we're, we have a separate part of the conversation for talking about the ones that are green.
I thought green was just kind of like on the consent and that we weren't going to be talking about those at all.
The way I understood what John said at the beginning is we're talking about reds and yellows first. Then we'll talk about all the greens kind of as a bucket. And then we'll talk about anything else that we want to add. Did I understand that correctly?
Yeah.
I guess I kind of assumed that as a, if it's green, it's kind of intended to be kept in. Or is, what does green mean?
A green means that the staff felt it was still relevant and okay. But it's in the second part of our agenda. After we get through the red and yellows, we'll ask P and Z members to bring up any green ones that they want to discuss.
Great. RP one, I can add to that list then. Thank you for the clarification, though. Okay, moving on.
All right. RP five, invest in park and open space improvements at Romans and Bard Parks. Romans was extensively improved in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty and is not on the park bond list. Bard Park is on that park bond list. So my, and as well as Clarkson, Amherst. So my suggestion would be to swap out Romans and put Clarkson, Amherst and Bard Parks for improvements.
Any thoughts? Good. Sounds good.
Only other question I had on this northeast map is, is Downing not considered a multi-modal corridor?
Yes, it is. In the walk and wheel plan, Downing Street is identified as a kind of extension of the old Hampton route. Then you would go, then that would, you'd shoot up north on Downing. That may be some, there may be some controversy to that based on some of the, a little bit of some of the comments I saw from the open house. Sometimes those busy streets, there's, there are peoples who just think that is is not, is verboten and should not ever be ever thought of or encouraged. So.
I mean, I feel like, okay. I think multi-modal can mean many different modes of transportation, right? And buses would be considered that also as much as it was on Broadway. Yeah, whether that's a bike lane per se is a, a different question. But, okay. All right, so we're moving on. So we're scratching Romans, adding Clarkson, Amherst, RP five.
Yep. All right, we'll go back to that. So central, this is, so that maybe you can probably tell a little bit more what the central and the medical district is in relationship to the northeast now. But I'll try to work on that to make that a lot more clear. It does, especially when you get to this areas of stability, they're very washed out and it looks a lot like the they're very, it's hard to distinguish that. But this, this map is much more easier to distinguish. So includes city center, there is south of two eighty five, the historic downtown and the wellness district. All right, so I had flagged downtown DT eight, enhance US Highway two eighty five as a community gateway through urban design and wave finding system. And I'm, I think I flagged that because it's really hard to see how you're going to do, improve the visual appearance of Highway two eighty five based on what's there. There's not a lot of room there to do things. So I'm, I'm wondering if maybe it should be expanded somehow, like into, onto other streets in the area. What do you think?
I think enhancement doesn't necessarily mean expand. I could imagine there's some wayfinding, place making, urban design that certainly could, I mean, that could enhance that experience coming through, through that corridor. So perhaps there's maybe some other options, obviously, other than, you know, actual traffic flow. Michelle.
Isn't this intersection supposed to be totally redone at some point in time in coordination with C dot? Or is that long, long, far away?
Do you mean the intersection of Broadway?
Broadway and two eighty five, yeah.
So, yes, well, the city did apply for grant funding to do that and did do a design. Unfortunately, inflation made that project very, very much more expensive than was previously thought. And the city has had to indefinitely shelve it.
Okay, well, and I kind of agree with the previous comment. I think it's very difficult to try and enhance Hampton as a community gateway. It's just so busy and adding too many things is just going to add more distractions. So and I mean, other than planting trees along, you know, two eighty five or something like that, or maybe when you go underneath Broadway, welcome to Inglewood on that bridge. I don't know what other things that could be done. So I am a little hesitant about this, this particular item.
I think Brendan and David then.
Well, you have to think trees is an excellent suggestion. And if we could put that in as an element of urban design, trees and make it much more walkable. You know, it's loud, it is awful, the trees absorb sound, there's no shade. Definitely needs to be more walkable. There's kids leaving, you know, Inglewood High School to walk across the Logan two eighty five intersection. Then you have people from the south side going north to the city center. So I don't, I'm looking for the right verbiage to say, I don't know. Something urban design that is conducive to sustainability, I guess. Any ideas, throw them out there for, for something that I, I think it could use improvement that the city can own without having to involve C dot, I think. We own some of that right away, don't we?
It's more than the money, I think, that, yeah, that the C dot grant was, but I mean, it is.
Yeah, that, that makes it, that does add to the challenges is C dot corridor. Obviously, you know, but, you know, we did, we, the city has done recently a congestion mobility study for that whole corridor. So I'm thinking that this should stay, but, but there should be other dimensions that are added to this. To make it complete.
David?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think I agree with most of what's being said. It seems like it's a, it's a little too vague right now because obviously from, let's call it Santa Fe all the way over to Clarkson, there's a lot of variability of what's happening on two eighty five there. And then you hit the corner Cherry Hills Village, which essentially turns its entire back on Inglewood. It's like a big, I won't say it, but it, I, my point is you can't just make these decisions in a bubble. You know, we're part of a, a city that's a metropolis that goes on and on and on, right? So the idea of refining part of it and then having it just stop and be against, you know, ten foot walls and giant mansions in Cherry Hills Village. To me, I'm not interested in, in spending money enhancing their backyard if they're not going to participate in that. And it seems like it needs to be a partnership between adjacent communities to do a cohesive project, not just Inglewood full stop, don't, don't talk to Sheridan, don't talk to Green or Cherry Hills Village, things like that.
I think that was part of the study, but no, the plant engineer, P L study.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm strongly in favor of keeping this in. To me, I understand the focus is being more on the Santa Fe side of two eighty five. When we're thinking about the central area, and I think that's really where the opportunity is. I know the, you know, city communications team has talked to C dot about possibilities of doing this kind of urban gateway and, you know, it is still something that they would like to do. I, you know, I think things like trees obviously are great, but as we move forward with the city center redevelopment, that's going to create an opportunity to really change the frontage with what is along two eighty five right now for a good chunk of this corridor. So I'm strongly in favor of keeping this in and, and having this be, you know, something that is part of the policy when that redevelopment occurs.
Yeah, I'm in favor of keeping it in and kind of for an opposite reason. You know, this is where a lot of people experience Inglewood for just, you know, four minutes as they travel across town. And if there's an opportunity like, oh, this place is, has a character and an identity. And there's things that we can do to enhance that, then, then I think that would be great. Michelle.
That just made me think of maybe the historical society or something could put up a sign that's basically says, welcome to historic Inglewood or something that's a little bit, so that you can tell it's a little bit different than just highway signs and, you know, speed limit signs or something like that.
Stephen, any thoughts?
Nope. Okay.
Can Amy talk or she has a alternate? If you have thoughts, we can share after.
Yeah, the only other thing I think on two eighty five was there was a recommendation of a pedestrian crossing at Logan, I think you mentioned as, you know, for students coming from the high school and middle school campus, trying to get to Safeway or to the future city center redevelopment, I think. I'm not sure how that looks exactly, but it would probably be something to consider.
Okay, thank you. All right, this is the one that is green, but got a lot of red dots.
Hey, we're not doing green right now.
Well, I say so, we are. So this is Medical District five, evaluate rezoning options to improve housing mix, increase density, which probably scared them, increased density, renovation of existing housing and implementing mixed uses for combined commercial and residential between Gerard and Jefferson two eighty five. And so this, what this is kind of, now, I have to say that most of this area is already highly zoned for these types of things, but there could be potential, I suppose. After learning some things, we, we do have now a track record of development that we can always analyze to see what we liked or didn't like about these different developments. And you can make adjustments. Some people might say that they'd like to see, you know. Some people might say that they'd like to see, you know, maybe they want to see more mixing than there is today. Like today, the, the commercial activity has to be along Old Hampton Avenue. And some people might decide, whoa, why, why don't you mix it up some more? And let, you know, let some of those types of uses creep on to farther south or farther north. That's a, that's an idea. Then there's the hospitals and they're always planning for the future as well. But I'm thinking though, that we probably need to work on this a little bit more and define it maybe a little bit more and be a little bit more gentle in, in some of the language so that people aren't so worried.
David?
I'm all for increasing density in that area to a certain degree, but I do think it needs to be done carefully. And maybe consider something like Cherry Creek North where you have unique zoning for CCN 8753. So it basically steps down between Second Avenue and Third Avenue as a way to sort of gradually blend that density down to a residential scale. I do live fairly close to there and I'd be very offended if it was suddenly five stories right on the South Side of Gerard. But if it was five stories, or excuse me, right on the South Side of Floyd, but if it was five stories facing the hospital, that's a different story. So, you know, obviously there are people who live in, on this block with single-family houses. And so they're sort of in a tough spot with any change like this. So it would seem to me that doing it very gently is very necessary. So, there you go.
You, you had mentioned that a lot of these areas are already zoned. And yet the, the policy or the bullet here starts with evaluate rezoning options. Does it really change anything to just eliminate those three words and keep the rest of it the same?
Yes, I think that's what we want to do is, is to massage this a bit. We want to keep it, I think, but massage it so it's less scary.
Yeah, certainly those first three words are grabbing people's attention.
Yeah.
If that's not actually what needs to happen, because it's already currently zoned to allow most of these things, then yeah, that would be my advice.
Somebody? Anybody else, Michelle?
No, I just don't know if it's a medial zone on the white part. Medial's district zoning, it's misspelled. That's all I'm trying to say.
It's remedial.
Oh, sorry about that.
Yeah.
It's all right.
All right, let's move on to near south between Kenyon and Stanford. From boundary to boundary, from Santa Fe to Clarkson. Open space number, or Oxford Station number three, maintain and enhance availability of recreational programs. The recreation center is right there, is an asset that should be maintained and improved with the potential to attract redevelopment. However, I don't know if that really needs to be in there or not, because I'm, I'm not sure if that's a comprehensive planned land use kind of necessary to maintain, enhance the rec programs, program that goes on at the rec center. But what do you think?
Any thoughts?
As a policy, I don't think it's necessary. Do you?
Was the, the rec center already improved before this 2016 plan? I don't remember the timing.
Improvements to the rec center, I believe that is part of the park bond.
Was it done before, the, the previous improvements to the Inglewood rec center? Because that wasn't that long ago.
I don't know.
I mean, I don't know that it needs to be a part of this either unless somebody feels strongly.
I kind of look at it like the school thing, you know, just cross it out, just go away.
That's kind of stating the obvious, right?
I agree. Oxford Station number 10, partner with Parks and Recreation to provide educational programs and community gardens. Community, there are some community gardens located at Clayton and Sherilyn, but they're, I think they're kind of school oriented. But Parks and Rec does want to do a community garden here in this area. But I think we're, we'll just move that to a citywide kind of thing.
Sounds good.
Jason Park Maddox 1, partner with local elementary school to promote and support this neighborhood asset. So that's kind of a repeat that we had before at Charles Hay. Which I think we decided to scratch.
I actually disagree about this one if it's talking about Maddox. Because to me, the Maddox ECE program is something that is different and special. And I, I don't know that it needs to be neighborhood based, right? I think it's similar to what we talked about with the rec center where like maybe, maybe this isn't the right place for it because it's not about the land, right? But I do actually think it's, I would like to see the city and the school district partner to promote the fact that Inglewood has a really excellent public ECE program.
And I kind of look at it as that's what the school district needs to do. I don't think it's a planning thing, so that's why, to support to get rid of it.
Yeah, how do, are there ways that this comp plan interacts or speaks to or communicates with these types of like school board initiatives? Or, you know, other large public sector documents? Do you know, is there any, is there any connection?
Well, we, we would like to do that with some of our other city plans to make, and so there's a lot of stuff that we, we would like it to be like, and this plan was very in sync for, with the park improvements. And we're, I think we're shooting for that again, or at least want to scrub stuff that doesn't make sense anymore that's been done. And, you know, with the park bond, I think that's something that people are going to be interested in. So we want to be in sync with that. But, but, you know, it's, it becomes a little bit different thing when it's, you know, it's now we're talking about a school district, which is a totally different entity than another, it's not the same as a different city department.
So Noah, can you maybe clarify what you are wanting to see? Just so I can understand, I think I didn't quite catch.
I think I'm fine with removing this from here. I just want to go on record that Maddox is great and we should talk about it more.
It sounds to me like you want to put that in the big bucket, that Inglewood should partnership with schools to promote schools and neighborhoods.
Yeah, I mean, I think, right, I think it, it, yeah, could definitely be something that goes into the sort of citywide to just build that better relationship with the school district and really promoting the school district as an asset for people who, you know, live in Inglewood. And it, it all, you know, sort of should feed together.
Yeah, and I, I agree with you. And I think that the marketing department and communications people for the city, yeah, we should, definitely they should be partnering with the school board and everything else to know how great Inglewood is. So I agree.
Wait.
Okay, well, yeah, okay, that's good, good discussion. And we'll consider moving those types to the citywide bucket. Far south, far south is between Stanford and Bellevue primarily, but also includes Brookridge, which goes farther south, as well as Cornerstone Park. Santa Fe to Clarkson, including Broadway. Duncan Park 4, focus redevelopment at key retail nodes such as Bellevue and Broadway and Quincy and Broadway. Quincy, I suppose, was just not quite part of that area, so that was interesting. Guess I had these things strangely bullet pointed there. What do you think about retail nodes on Broadway?
Well, I guess, why was it red dotted? Any, do you have any idea or?
Excuse me?
Why the red dots?
Oh, these aren't red dots necessarily. These are just things that I had questions about and I wanted to bring up for discussion.
I, I do think the further south Broadway corridor does tend to get forgotten about in terms of how are we going to activate these areas? And so I think keeping that in the plan to try to do that, like as we're talking about the, the Kmart area, which is, I guess, a little bit further, but also Bellevue and Broadway. You know, what are those opportunities that we can have for the entirety of, of Broadway corridor? Not forgetting about these further south areas, I think would be good.
What, what do you think it means to focus redevelopment in the context of this plan?
I think it's just, this is a, this could be a priority area, I think. The thing about that, when you get down to Bellevue and Broadway, north and south of that intersection, you, you, it's a lot different feel. It starts to transition toward a suburban Littleton feel. Rather than the old school, older Broadway corridor farther north. It also has much larger parcels. So it's kind of like a whole different animal. There's a lot more, probably a lot more potential there, quite frankly, in certain way, because you're dealing with such, much, much larger properties that go much farther into the neighborhoods, so.
To like achieve this goal, would it be giving incentives to developers? I mean, the city's not developing this area, like, just trying to think through this, like, what does this actually mean?
We've been, well, that, yeah, what does this mean? So just for a little bit of background, we have been given some marching orders from above about how that we, that the city wants to be, the city manager wants to be focusing on Broadway south of 285. And he's told us to think as audacious as we can, be, don't make no small plans. And there's talk of money.
So is this a rezoning question? Or, I mean, is that the idea that you want to build bigger and entice, or rezone it to enable developers to then build bigger?
Maybe probably be more like just small changes.
John, do you mind if I jump in real quick too?
Go ahead.
I think this is one of those that's a very broad policy because we don't want to narrow it down. Because we want to be able to look at every different facet. Does it mean looking at rezoning? Does it mean, you know, putting our chief redevelopment officer, economic development partners onto these areas for redevelopment? Does it mean that we need to change other items or a code that don't necessarily mean rezoning? So it, it means everything and nothing all at the same time because we don't know what we need to do. Because we're trying to, as we've said with other things, we don't want to pigeonhole ourselves with this really high level conversation by saying, do this. And then when we can't do that, then we have to come back to you to change it, to say, well, now do that. Oh, well, we can't do that. So this just means do whatever you can to focus in this area. Or do you want to say, focus on Broadway?
No, I think that's, that's helpful. In fact, that's a lot of the comments I think I've given across the board is that very thing of like, let's make the plan larger so that all of the options can be considered. I was just, and you helped me with like, the city manager wants to focus. And I don't disagree, I mean, it's, it's got certainly less character than other parts of, of, of Inglewood, so.
Yeah, I don't know if there's much to change necessarily. I mean, I think if that's certainly the focus.
If that's certainly the focus or has been given as an imperative, then it should be, it should be there. I don't know if this is the best wording, but.
And I think the, the two southeast and southwest corners are already PUD. And then the rest of it's mixed U, MUB2, or MUB, something like that. So it's already got pretty optimal zoning opportunities to be able to hopefully catalyze, have, be a catalyst for, you know, creating some sort of additional improvements there. But yeah, Brenda?
We'll call it an economic development zone, an opportunity zone in that whole area south. Yes, there are, that's, that's probably a lot of attention on it because of the car lots. And yes, they are big lots. And there is getting, some retail stores are getting some attention down there. There's, you know, that little motel that has a little hairstylist in it. I've been in there and, yeah, anyway, I, that is, we used to call the central city the economic development zone. And that's how it got, I think we got some funding went to tear it down, if I recall. But anyway, that's what I would call it, the economic development zone.
I think that has a specific connotation.
Opportunity zone does, yes.
So does enterprise.
Okay. So just make sure that if that is what we're calling it, that it is the right thing, but, or if we have to modify that language in some way. So it's not inferring that it's, again, because parts of Inglewood are in the opportunity zone, if I'm not mistaken, or at least they were.
They were.
Yeah, yeah. Is it still, do you know, you were shaking your head, Eric, no?
No, I'm shaking my head that yes.
Shaking my head, yes, there, parts of Inglewood are in both enterprise and opportunity zone.
So let's just make sure that we're not calling it something that it is not, just so there's a confusion in that. But having some sort of notation that this is an area that we want to concentrate on.
Yeah, so I live in this area and I think it has a lot of character. It's a different character. But it definitely has character. I think the answer to this is to actually scrap this one and the, the two that you have on here that are yellow. Because you already have the BB2, which to me encompasses the broader area and has a broader focus on the neighborhood serving retail, pedestrian infrastructure. Like it's, it's a, you know, I think that BB2 to me captures what I would like to see in that entire strip from 285 south. And so to me, we don't need these ones that focus on specific places in this way. And then we don't have to worry as much about, you know, how to reword this. I think it's already captured in BB2. So I would get rid of these other ones and just leave that.
So, yeah, Michelle?
I was just curious, is there, is like the Inglewood Chamber and other business organizations aware of this bold vision? And what does the mayor not like about the way it is now?
Not sure if it, I, I was just saying it's, we're, we're, we've been told, we've been asked to look at this through, by the city manager. I don't know if the mayor is involved.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, misspoke, sorry.
I just wanted to make sure that's clear. And what does he think? Well, I think he, I think one of the things he really is focused on is the streetscape. They're, they're, he wants, the streetscape hasn't, still looks like it's from 1950.
Yeah, no, it's, it's concrete.
Yeah, and so he, he, there, there is a plan to make some improvements that way. So he's starting there. This is just getting started. This is just, this is just hot the press, so.
Well, that's good. I mean, you want to plan for the future, that's what the plan is all about. So that's, that's great. But go back to the first question, is the, is the business community aware of this kind of, I mean, it kind of goes back to the theme of how do we interact with other, other things in the city?
Yeah, so there's no plan yet. There is no planning work yet. And we've just been told that that's the, that is a priority.
Okay.
And so we don't, and we, it's up to us to now explore that priority.
Okay.
And we're at the very beginning.
Star Trek.
Very beginning.
Yeah.
Okay, but I think I, I think I understand, I think I like Noah's. Okay, but I think I, I think I understand, I think I like Noah's suggestion is that let's keep this, because let's not prejudge anything. And we're going, let's, let's make it a priority, but let's just make it, let's not prejudge anything by just keeping it very open and vague. And just naming the whole corridor as something is a priority. And, you know, Kmart, I think the focus was that with BB one, was that at the time that this was going on, this plan was coming together, that Kmart was dead and it was gone, and that was kind of a problem. So a big hole there, so that, there's a lot of focus on what could happen there, so. And that's no longer probably the case today. All right. Brookridge three. Diversify land use mix through amenitized apartment complex. Pocket parks and restaurants develop a compact, full-service neighborhood. And my question is, what might this look like?
I mean, I think there's opportunities around Big Dry Creek that I hope that we could take advantage of to make sure that we are mixing in some of that redevelopment with keeping open space along our green corridors that kind of have been constrained in previous redevelopments. What thoughts?
That's good.
Just one minor comment. Pocket parks are great, but they're often terms that you see in like, New York City, in Manhattan, because you're working with individual lots and you're not competing with something huge. So I'm just curious about trying to encourage pocket parks when you're, we're already talking about being in and around Bellevue Park and right by Cornerstone Park. I love the concept of pocket parks, I just don't know that they make sense in this region of development that's currently fairly residential, not that dense.
I'm also, I'm curious as to the origin or the background of this idea of a compact, full-service neighborhood, and why this area specifically is called out to be considered for something like that? And, great idea, I think, I just, it seems like it's coming from somewhere, and why it's specifically applied here.
Yeah, that's a good question, because as, most of it, so a lot of this came, actually, almost all of this was developed by, the goals and objectives were developed by staff, but these policies were developed by our consultant. And so sometimes, yeah, that's like, it's like, hmm, what were they really thinking there? I, that's why I think I have certain questions on them. And, yeah, I'm, I'm kind of thinking that they felt this area was, felt differently. It felt suburban with large parking areas, and it wasn't, it wasn't compact, it wasn't walkable. And so that's, that's what they were getting at, I think.
I think there are big swaths of large car dealerships here that, you know, there could be an opportunity in the future, I don't know if that's right now or not, but I think keeping, you know, what do these look like? Do car dealerships still need to be on the major intersections? As we talked about, like with the used car dealerships, like, they can be off on side streets because nobody's driving by and looking, they're looking online, then finding something, then going. Is there an opportunity for these areas that are in kind of prime corridors to have a different life at some point in time? David?
Oh, I didn't have anything.
Oh, okay, your mic's on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Brenda?
Yeah, that's my question. We're looking at W two, that's the dealership, isn't it?
M three.
M three, W three, M three. Well, nonetheless, yeah, let's say it's redeveloped, let's say it's a, but the pocket park situation has now become kind of integral in a lot of the PUDs, we're seeing a rezoning. So that's why I'm wondering, I kind of agree, we don't necessarily need to call out a pocket park, per se. We've incorporated landscape into a lot of, and this would have to be rezoned, that's my question. Wouldn't that have to be rezoned for housing?
You can do housing in B two.
Yeah, it's already zoned, M U B two.
Is it M U B?
I think, it's hard to.
M U B two.
Yeah. And then the area behind it, so L two is M U R three, I think.
The only thing we'd have to consider, I'll just say this one thing, is another situation, like the medical district, where we have these homes right here, that's not, that's not Inglewood though, right? They can't really, okay, so never mind that question.
We don't care, no, sure, we do care, but.
I, I think that this is a relic of when the Kmart just closed and that we didn't know what was going to really happen at the Bellevue and Broadway intersection. In my opinion, I think it's kind of outdated.
I mean, I, I do think there's still some opportunities over here, I understand what you're saying. And I, I don't want to, hopefully can put into a plan that someday this area is even more than what the Kmart then turned into. It, it is a great site now for the Hive and for the Owl Brewery, that I'm blanking on the name. Zanidis, thank you, it's lovely. But that's reusing the existing space, which is great for now, but what's the opportunity for this to look back in the future? I think there's still some things there. Okay? Steven, you good?
You all right?
Yep. Carl, Eric, you guys have thoughts who haven't heard too much, maybe checking in? Pulse check? Okay, good, all right. Okay. Thanks, John, and next?
BB five, work with RTD to provide expanded bus services, including adding a new route along Bellevue and more frequent service along Broadway. Good goals. There are challenges, of course, with bus service today, as you probably know. And I understand the impetus for Bellevue Avenue, but that will be somewhat challenging, because when we go east, there's not really a lot of bus riders. When you go to Greenwood Village and Cherry Hills Village, not a lot of bus riders there. So, but we'll think about that some more, I guess, too.
I'd be curious if there's ever conversations about tying or discussing future plans for expanded bus service that's coincided with when development happens, as opposed to arbitrary saying, "Oh, we're going to increase bus service without necessarily having an increased population that's riding the buses or demanding it." So is it possible to sort of have plans implemented as coinciding with, you know, let's say something in S two gets redeveloped into 500 units? Just wondering if it could coincide with development as opposed to, at this point, seeming like perhaps an arbitrary goal, but not necessarily having the demand yet?
Yeah, okay, that's fair enough. When the time is more right, that, that should be a goal, but it's probably farther in the future.
Sorry, just to clarify, I think it might make sense to just talk about it hand in hand with potential redevelopments, so that when you're pitching something being redeveloped into a giant apartment building, you're saying, "And this comes with X, Y, and Z from RTD expanded service to support the desire to build that," something like that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and I think a lot of the density is pretty close to Broadway itself that has the corridor. So it's not necessarily even on the Bellevue side, but something to keep in mind. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
All right, let's move on to the final area, which is southwest. Southwest, south or west of Santa Fe, stretching all the way to Lowell Boulevard, including the Federal Boulevard corridor. This was known as Centennial Park, C E P two. Preserve and enhance key employment parcels. There's really not any strong employment generators really here. There are large industrial sites, but they're currently not populated with strong employment generators, with the exception of waste management. Waste management probably doesn't employ people, but most of the other ones don't really employ a lot of people.
I was going to say, this is, we got, we scrapped this on, on an earlier one, too. Again, it was, I think it was 2016, they must have been worried about jobs. I think we want to keep retail alive on federal. You know, we could do some enhancements. We could speak about that. You know, because we have the King Supers, that's great, and they've done some really good job, good work at the strip mall. Go a little north to that bowling alley, ew. And it backs up to some green space there that's really sad. I don't know how to speak to that. Oh, let's see what, but I don't think we need to enhance key employment parcels. More, more focus on retail, I would think.
And housing.
I, I think obviously a big challenge in this area is just how disconnected it is even from itself. It's not even a wholly conducive area, so how are, how are we providing input for an overall area that is very, very disjointed? I mean, there are industrial areas with some, two residential neighborhoods with some open space, with some commercial, you know, seems great, except they're completely in weird places. So I, I think that was a challenge I was having a little bit with this area. Go ahead.
Well, let me ask you about this Bellisle area. I've been back in there. Dotting Inglewood. I have it dotted.
Yes, yes it is.
You just had it dotted weird, I just wanted to make sure.
It's kind of a strange, I found that boundary to be strange as well.
I don't have anything to say about it. It could use some residential help, it could use some, again, I think just city overall policies, again, for this area, like you say, loans for home improvement, homeownership, that kind of thing. As far as bridging it all together, we only have Centennial Park and the bike trails that come down here. That's a good point, I don't, I don't know how else you would, what else you could say.
Was this the only item on the southwest that we need to touch on?
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you for all that. So I think at this point, we'll move on to P and Z's choice on any green policies that they want to discuss.
Anybody else before me, or should I go? RP one. Romans Park one, which is, attract neighborhood serving retail to Old Hampton Avenue corridor. And I think that is in part of the apartment complexes there, kind of across from the Cherry Hills neighborhood. There are a couple of, you know, there's a small strip mall in there, I guess you could call it. You know, was, was the thought process to try to change that? Is this, was this done, you know?
So, yes, so originally that Romans Park neighborhood included the Old Hampton corridor, the most far eastern portion of it, from Downing to that place where the, it, it goes on to the highway. It comes out, the highway dumps off near the Cherry Hills Caribou Coffee. And so it's a small few blocks, but I think the intent was that we want to see new businesses there, too.
I mean, it, it has seen a fair amount of redevelopment recently. I think there's more that can happen that's very walkable to where I live, so I see it all the time. I, I'm fully in support of it, but I don't know, I think maybe the question is attracting neighborhood serving retail, it kind of already has some of it, so is it just encouraging that, or is it trying to dissuade, or, or sorry, trying to rezone the residential that's between 285 and Old Hampton? Because there is like that newer medical office building across from the Caribou Coffee strip mall. The Caribou Coffee strip mall has some fine options, but it's single story, could be bigger, maybe. But is, I guess, yeah, what's the, what's the plan?
I, I think the plan is strictly focused on trying to attract more neighborhood serving retail businesses on, on Old Hampton corridor itself.
Is it on the Old Hampton corridor, or on the, the Romans Park part was in the apartment complex areas?
There is, it included originally this strip of Old Hampton from Downing to the highway, where it comes off. So it's like, yeah, two or three blocks.
I thought that was Old Town, so, okay. It just, it seemed like it was a, it didn't quite make sense, I, I think I see it now, so I'm, I'm okay with that one.
Okay.
Everyone else is good? Yep. Yeah, Noah's?
I had a couple of things in the northeast that I wanted to bring up. So the first one is, you'll be shocked to learn, I want to talk about bikes and the Bike Network. So you've got BL two and BL three, which are targeting like different, specific streets. I, I don't think Downing is the right place for a bikeway. Not because I don't want it there, but because to me, it's not the safest street to have that on. When I ride north-south, I ride on Franklin, because it's much quieter. So I think I'd potentially like to see this BL two and BL three just kind of collapsed into one. And with a focus on just like creating a cohesive, safe network of low-traffic streets that are designated as the bikeways. I, I, I feel like the focus on putting bikeways on all the major streets is what you come up with when you're planning bike lanes and you don't actually ride a bike. Because bikes don't want to be on the same streets that cars are on, right? So like, we need to think about how we can create a cohesive network that's on low-traffic streets for bikes, so that they're away from the high-traffic corridors. So I would, I think, collapse those two and, and maybe take out the specific street names and just focus on how do we create a safe, cohesive network?
And I think we should also continue, Denver's is on Franklin also, so having a continuation.
Exactly.
Looking at those neighborhoods.
Once you leave Inglewood, Franklin continues to be a great path all the way up into Wash Park. And yeah, so I think, you know, to me, that makes sense.
Do you want to hold there? I think we might have some comments on that, and then we'll come back to your other one.
Sure, yeah.
Oh, I just wanted to say, thank you, Noah, for saying that. That's, I mean, it drives me crazy what, what some streets are like now.
Okay. Oh, okay, I thought you were going to say something on that, okay, go ahead.
And the other one I wanted to talk about in northeast was BL eight. Commit resources to enhance the unique character of stable, single-family residential area. This sounds really like exclusionary to me. I don't know why we would need to commit resources if the whole idea of designating it as a stable residential area is that it's good, right? So I don't think it should be a priority to commit resources to a stable residential area, so I would take that one out.
I wholeheartedly agree with comments on both of those. And I'm sorry, just to back up to the, the bikeways. And this goes back to my comment earlier about how this document would speak to the walk-in wheel plan or other transit kind of planning, you know, documents. How, how do these fit together and not conflict with each other? Or lock this into something that might not be compatible to, to those other initiatives?
So this plan was developed in conjunction with the original walk-in wheel plan at the same time. As part, as actually, there was three plans that were developed together, which was the comp plan, the walk-in wheel plan, and the stationary master plan. Now, since then, the walk-in wheel plan was updated. Was there a lot of change? Not, not necessarily, but may, but I think that Downing Street was added in the update. But, yeah, you know, we try to keep this, we try to keep the, the actual improvements somewhat vague, because. vague, because as was relayed before, you know, we start off with doing something, trying to do anything, anything now, to make a bad situation better. And, you know, so the first thing you do is you focus on paint. Paint is cheap. But there is aspirations for something much, much more grand, but it's a lot of money, and but it's going to be a lot farther down the road. So, yeah, the gamut, you can run the gamut from simple, the simple share of markings, and lots of people don't like the share of markings at all, to this grand, protected bike boulevard, raised cycle track, you know, it could go that high. And so we try to not be very specific about that, because it hasn't been decided.
But this is specific about locations, and would you want to keep it that way?
I would lean more towards that. I mean, we do, you know, we don't necessarily, if you keep it really vague, I don't know, unless you really have a desire to change the walk-in-wheel plan, but I really don't, but...
I mean, you could, I mean, one approach could be improve north-south connections that are contiguous with Denver's, you know, designate, you know, and keep it that way, without specifying which specific streets they go on, but just...
And I think part of the challenge then, on the east-west side, too, how are we defining those? Are those defined? Because those tend to be the challenging ones also. Something, think that, go ahead, Brendan.
Yeah, move on to DT one, Englewood Station. I think we can get rid of balanced vehicle movement with opportunities for bike and pedestrian. This is real specific, between the mid-block crossing at Gothic Theater and Paseos. Didn't we already do this? Are we putting in another one? And I don't necessarily have a problem with opportunities for bike and pedestrian mobility, but I'm just like, I thought we already did that on that area. And I would like to add that we figure out how to get people from the south side of two eighty-five, where the police station is in that neighborhood, get them over to the city center where all the shopping is safely. We also have a bus route that goes down Aladdin, then turns on Ithaca, and then, yeah, Jefferson, and then down Galapago. So there's a lot of movement between north and south, not just on Broadway, but further towards the city center, that we're not really accommodating, and I don't really believe I've seen it in the walk-in-wheels plan. I haven't seen any bus, I sure haven't seen any bike paths, that's for sure. But how can we put it in here that we put a priority on people who, by the way, that's a lot of subsidized housing in the Scarats neighborhood, my neighborhood. I'm not in subsidized housing, but I live by it, and they are very commonly getting, trying to get to the Walmart and get to their grocery shopping by foot.
Okay, so we need to not just focus on Broadway, but Hampton as well.
Crossing, yeah. No?
Yeah, I, first of all, just wanted to second that, that, yeah, I think there absolutely should be a goal in here to focus on creating better connections across Hampton, I think that's, across two eighty-five. That's super important. The other thing I wanted to say is the Paseos and the mid-block crossing for the Gothic and all of that is part of the downtown, this Broadway realm plan that the Downtown Development Authority is working on, so there is still a lot in the works in that area. So I, I don't think it's, yeah, by any means done on those specific goals.
What type of crossing are you suggesting for the, for the two eighty-five corridor, north to south? Are we looking at bridges, or just...
I mean, ideal case would be that you have pedestrian bridges, you know, probably a couple of them in Englewood, but it is a C dot corridor, and there's, and, you know, we know how expensive the Oxford one is going to be.
Carl's Oxford Bridge?
Yeah. But I think Englewood continued, like, the fact is that two eighty-five is a highway that cuts Englewood in half. And if we want, you know, the, if we want Englewood to be one cohesive community where people can move between the different parts to live, shop, work, all these things, then we need to think about how to make those connections. And so I think, I don't know what the answer is, but I think it would help to have it in the plan, to say it's a priority.
Big dig for two eighty-five?
Well, let me just add, I did press with the BART, the little Englewood Expressway, I kept trying to get them to say, well, go south, so we don't have to have a bridge. We can ask future city services to add those little terms that they have to not just go east-west, but to go north-south.
I mean, the first last mile is always the biggest challenge for any mobility plan, right? And that east-west connector to the hospital is amazing. If there was a north-south one that went to the south side of that neighborhood, I feel like it would be used at, the issue is that the east-west one probably doesn't get used as much as it could, so trying to justify it, but it almost feels like it would be more use down there from people shopping in the neighborhood, especially as things get redeveloped. So I love the idea of having some sort of idea in the plan to say, hey, we, a first-last-mile connection to the Englewood Station, going south. Any other thoughts on that, or others? I do have one more on the Oxford Station. OS six, there's integrated variety of land uses, including neighborhoods serving retail and restaurants, and the housing types to capitalize on light rail stations, or existing employment centers and future residential development. Love the idea of this, but it feels like the redevelopment that we've been including in this area has not had any of the retail or restaurants within the mixed-use areas. And I understand there's challenges with having main floor retail in these residential units. It's an area where we're putting in a ton of residential, and there's no retail and no restaurants around there. I don't think you can get milk from the dairy there. So I don't, I don't think there's any ability to get anything around there, and how...
There's the machines at the rec center.
Sure, some stack machines, perfect. Either I think we need to figure out what we mean here and how we want to try to do this, or is this still even reasonable with what has been included in this area as of right now?
Yeah, that's, it's, the area, it almost like, the idea is like, wouldn't that be great if some of those things that happen in Rhino, which was an industrial area? Could that, could those, could those types of things happen where people take a industrial building, obviously, they're not quite like Rhino, they're smaller scale typically, but could they put in some brewery or something like that? But none of that has happened. None of that has happened, you know? And even the redevelopment of what we have seen, the residential development, you know, the light rail opened in like two thousand, or two, I think it was two thousand, the year two thousand. And we didn't see our, really, our first residential project there till two thousand sixteen, sixteen years. So that's, there's, you know, yes, it's like, does this place really have that potential? And that's, that's kind of the big question. And I can see why you might have brought that up, because you start thinking, is it ever going to happen?
And/or should we be doing, as these things are coming in, it feels like we've been shying away from requiring that main floor retail, except on the Hampton corridor, the Broadway corridor are the only two places that it's, I think, still requirements. So should this area have some sort of requirement, or go back to that, or some sort of suggestion for it? Or are you thinking more, not in the mixed-use, you're talking about a reuse, maybe more like what you have in Evans Station, where there's some breweries and distilleries over in that area that have just reused some of the existing industrial areas?
Yes, I think that's really what, you don't want to do the requirement, because you're just going to, people are just not going to want to do that in those new housing developments. But, yes, I think what I would think is more possible is that kind of thing, where someone takes an old property, like you were talking about at Evans Station, there's a few like that there. That is really what we're probably looking at. And then the question is, how far, what is the, you know, the city hasn't necessarily, our economic development has not necessarily figured out how to really encourage that necessarily, or go after that. It probably, quite frankly, our economic development is one person, and he's, and he used to, we used to walk around every lunch hour for half an hour, and that doesn't happen anymore, because he's just so burdened. So, you know, how does that even, you know, that's, that's a lot of studying, a lot of case studies, trying to figure that one out. But, so, yeah, it's, it's totally legitimate to question it.
But I also like the, after we've discussed this through, I like the reality of keeping it, but go ahead, Brendan.
I mean, if, if there's this potential, we're talking about this sort of separate bucket, that sort of citywide kind of initiatives, I mean, that kind of thing could be really cool of like, supporting the adaptive reuse and redevelopment, of getting creative with partnerships, public-private partnerships, or, I don't know, just kind of holding that out there as kind of a goal, of like, there's some opportunities, especially in the catalytic zones, to get creative. And, you know, the city's not going to be building this stuff, but, you know, are we open to hearing creative solutions from developers who could do something that's really interesting?
Do we have any data on the ridership on the, on the BART? I mean, one day I took the whole, whole thing, went around the whole circle, not one person got on, not one.
We do have ridership data. We task, I guess, we task the drivers with keeping track of that. So we do have the data.
Yeah. If you want to develop South Broadway, have one that goes down South Broadway. Goes to, from Evans to Broadway. To, I mean, K, the old Kmart. Yeah, Bellevue, didn't have to go to Evans, but...
Enhance, enhance the bus service on Broadway.
Supplement, yeah.
Yep.
And I think part of the issue that I always have with BART is it, it should just go in a circle, and it doesn't. It's like, eh, 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 you know, it, I've written it a dozen times, probably, and every single time, I'm like, why is it churning here? You know, I mean, I understand that you want to go mid-block to pick up some of the communities that are, you know, on certain blocks, but it's a block. I mean, it literally goes, it could just go in a circle, and I think it would be more efficient, I think it would be, people would maybe use it a little bit more, I don't know.
I think that's a good point. I mean, anytime there's a short route that seems inefficient, people are more likely to walk if they can, if...
Yeah, Carl? Do you have more?
Glenwood's got a bus that runs around town, and you see, it's always got people on it, always. So it's, I don't know what route it takes, but it goes to a lot of different places and a lot of people ride it, so...
Which town?
Glenwood Springs.
Glenwood, okay. I thought you were saying Glendale for a second, but, okay.
Well, question, are you incorporating the Broadway corridor study recommendations?
I will, yes, we will, I will be trying to add those. Is, are you, so are you trying to move towards now suggestions for new policies?
I think we can, I think we're moving on to that, that, yeah, I think we're good with questions on any other ones, I don't think anybody else had any. Okay, then, yes, moving on to questions or ideas for new ones.
New policies, yeah. Do you want me to bring up each map separately, like this, new policies for Northwest, or do you just want to throw them out, whatever you got?
You want to go by map? Okay. I was, I feel like we've been kind of talking through the whole thing, so if there's one specific that somebody wants to go to, that's fine, I don't know if we need to go through each one.
Well, not each one, but, oh, yeah, maybe.
That's what I'm saying, each area? Sure, okay. Want to start with Northwest and go from there?
The trailer park at the, in the Northwest. So it does bother me that, it's upsetting that they could lose that housing. So I know that you threw this, that it was thrown at city council, the right of first refusal, and they batted it away. But couldn't we still make that a goal, that to, if, say, a developer put it up for sale, that the city could offer to buy it, and like you suggested, retain at least temporary housing or keep the housing there? So we're talking about along, those of you who weren't here last time, on the Northwest corridor, by the sewage plant, and really along that South Platte River South area on Santa Fe, there are some trailer parks back there.
I think M five on the map.
Is it M five? Thank you. Right? And specifically, yeah, the one by the sewer plant, that kind of thing. Because it's been explained that, that's valuable land. And some of the things that they sell that land for, say, if somebody were to want to sell it, won't necessarily be housing, it could be one of those giant truck stops again, or I just recently learned some land by Centennial Park, it's not a part of Englewood, has now been sold for car storage, or car auction sites. So those things seem to generate more money for people than actual housing. So how can we suggest in our policy that perhaps Englewood would consider how to save it? You're on the housing policy here, and I do believe that the city should consider right of fierce refusal. I heard one of the council members say that that's like eminent domain, and it is not. It is just simply that the city would have the right to make the first offer. So like, it's up for sale, it's, the city does get some money sometimes for funds that's collected from a number of cities, maybe you can explain a little better, where we just threw it, threw in some money to buy an office building in the tech center, and that's being converted to housing. We gave up that money and gave it to a collective in Denver. Well, next year, what if we held on to that money? And we said, oh, we're going to, we're going to buy, if that lot comes up for sale, we'll be the first, we'll get a right to make the first offer. Say, they'll put it up for sale for two million, fine, that's the offer, but it doesn't go to a bidding war, because the city has the right of first refusal.
I think that, it's a good idea. I'm curious if, you know, I don't know what the logistics are, or something like that, is there an opportunity to consider rezoning it such that you could worry a little bit less about who buys it? If you rezone it and say, this has to be multifamily, and there has to be certain conditions on this property, like higher percentage of affordable units, things like that, is that possible, or is that illegal?
Here's what I'll say, your challenge should be right now, focus on the what? What do you want? Don't focus on the how. Leave that open to staff to figure out how we get there, so don't think too narrowly. Focus on the what? If you're wanting to provide more housing opportunities in that area, say that. Don't tell us how to get there, let us figure that out. Because if you tell us how to get there and we can't get there that way, there's nothing we can do. So I would say, focus on the what. You're trying to achieve, and let us focus on the how.
I think in general, having the comp plan, again, adopt, incorporate, or speak to policies and recommendations that have come out of the Affordable Housing Task Force, I mean, I think it should just be, you know, affordable housing, housing opportunities should be throughout, you know, this plan. It's... It's, yeah, I mean, it's, it's on everybody's mind, it's, it's a challenge for almost everybody, and I think, I think it should be reflected in the plan in some way.
Thank you.
And so is that one you're saying, maybe bring out of the separate bucket, or would you want to say in each bucket?
Well, I don't know, I mean, if we're, like I said, we're talking about maybe is there a bucket of citywide kind of initiatives, rather than just focused on, on sectors?
Yeah, to, what I would say about that is that, the way the, I followed all of those Affordable Housing Task Force meetings, and so it was very, it's very general in terms of what the city should pursue, but was not necessarily geographical. That is, that's a whole nother level, and that's, that is probably what will have to occur as we go forward with, if we have a task or, or a commission, they will be having to study that, and what the, or the geographical ramifications of those regulations or policies are. So at this point, we'll probably have to be more general.
Yeah.
And so...
And, and similar to what Brian was saying earlier, that's, I think, the reason why the task force kept it general, was because, you know, specific solutions may or may not work, right? At different times, as things evolve, I do think that, you know, whatever evolves, whether it's a commission or just recommendations that the, that council approves, having it something in the comp plan pointing to like, this is, this is where we're going, right? This is, this is part of where we're going, is to make sure that our city includes affordable housing, so I think it absolutely should, should be included and referenced in some manner in the plan.
Yeah, you have to put it in policy now. We don't have to be specific, but we have to have the housing policy in there, and then the ordinances will come later. But, yeah, that would be a big bucket, for sure.
And I think, like I said a minute ago, which also I think goes to Brenda's point of, maybe it's not just adaptive reuse, but preservation, certainly of housing units, of affordable housing units, so whether, you know, it doesn't have to be preserving these mobile home parks as they exist, but preserving the number of affordable units that are there, whatever those evolution, so, you know, something about preserving and expanding affordable housing, you know, having that called out in the plan, yeah.
I agree, the affordable housing makes a lot of sense, if we look at the Baker Park area, up in the, in the transition area, that, I think we talked about that at the beginning of the last session, I think that, areas like that would be prime places where it's not very desirable now, but it could be very desirable down the road. And then if we look at the map for the Southwest, when we're looking down at the L2 and the Belisle area, I think there's a, I think there's a lot of opportunities in the Inglewood area to turn something that's not very desirable in a transitional state into something that can, can meet the needs of the community in affordable housing fashion.
Thank you. So at this time, we're coming up to the end of our time, but I also realize that there may, you may have not all been able to get out all of your ideas, and you may come up with ideas, more ideas as we, as time goes by, so we will, at the next study session that we have with you guys, we will try to open, keep that door open for more. So at this point, what I will be doing is I'll be rewriting and repackaging and redistributing all these policies that we've discussed, and getting rid of some and revitalizing, revising some others, and then I have begun to add just other ones off the top of my head that I saw on paper, haven't presented them to you yet, and now I've heard your, some of your feedback, and so I'm gonna start working this stuff, and we'll come back and you'll see the, that product, and at that time, I think you'll still have opportunities to add. Sound good?
Great, and maybe give us a quick rundown again on our timeline, on when we need to have these completed, do we have one more study session, is it two? I thought there was kind of a specific timeline that we were trying to hit at least, but if there's not, I, I would rather that, I just thought there was something that we needed to make sure we made it by, so just to make sure that we're doing our part to help you out.
Well, I will have, I think I will have to be competing with some Broadway design guidelines here soon, but, but yes, we do plan to have a number of more study sessions with you in March, I believe. We want to then transition this into strategies, and then hopefully then that, we can take that to council in April. And then, then I have to put together the draft of the plan by May, and then have, have probably some final study sessions, a final draft, then go into the planning and zoning, public hearing, FOF, finds of fact, and then city council approval. With, and that, it looks like we're still trying to make July for that. Yeah.
Have fun.
Thank you. And with that, I think I'll close my session out.
Thank you. All right. Well, with that, thank you again very much, John, for all the work you've done putting this together and shepherding us along. I think we've gotten exponentially more efficient with this the second time, so hopefully with the next ones, we'll even be...
Thank you very much.
More efficient with your time, so thank you. Now, today is my last day as chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I appreciate everyone's support through this time, but we need to now vote for a new chair and a new vice chair, so with that, I will throw it out for recommendations for, for chair and for vice chair, so let's start with chair. Nominations for chair, yeah. Not everyone at once. Yeah, Eric, yeah?
I would nominate Aaron.
Okay. Any other nominations?
I'll second that nomination.
Okay. Okay, are, okay. Nancy, do we vote one at a time? Do we vote, can there be multiple nominations, or do you vote for each, or do you, how do you, how would we do this, just to make sure I'm not precluding anything?
So you can have multiple, yeah, sorry, you can have multiple nominations, I would do the vote for each separately, so that one candidate, a motion is advanced for Aaron, and then after that, the motion would be advanced for another candidate in lieu of for...
If Aaron wouldn't pass, would be the only time that would go on then?
Um, yeah, um, sorry, but there's usually not more than one nomination.
I, I, I get it, I just want to make sure we're doing it correctly.
Yes, so at this point, you can see there's other nominations for other candidates, one...
So move to close nominations, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
I move to clo, close nominations.
Then we can second that, and...
Second.
Thank you, and we can vote.
Okay. Ms. Austin?
Yes.
This is, this is to elect Aaron Martinez as chair of the Planning Commission, just to re, restate that, so Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Hubka?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Montiel?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Ruddle?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplan?
Aye.
Mr. Martinez?
Aye. Thank you.
Mr. Renson?
Yes.
And Chair Hagerty?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Now nomination for vice chair. Do I still, am I, am I still the chair, even though I just got voted out? Do I get to do this anymore?
No, you can't do it anymore. So the vice chair also gets changed at the same time as the regular chair?
I'm sorry to question.
So the chair is two years, and the vice chair is one year?
I don't believe there's a, a time limit on the vice chair in the bylaws, but Vicky can answer.
Yeah, I'm looking at the bylaws right now. Um, so it's not specific for vice chair, but in elections, an individual who has served two consecutive terms in the same office may again become eligible to serve in such office two years after concluding the two consecutive terms, so we read that to apply to both the chair and the vice chair.
And is the term is a term for two years?
The term is, it begins when elected at the first meeting in February, and it runs until the, a date the successor is elected, a term would be two years, starting from when they were initially elected to the position.
Okay, so Brenda's still it for another year?
Yeah, I've only done it a year, I mean, unless you really don't want me to be vice chair.
But how come, she was, she was elected last year. Why'd we do a mid-year last year? Do you remember why?
I don't know, but we, I'm not done, I do.
Did Kate leave? No.
You nominated him right there.
I did, yeah.
Yeah.
But I don't remember why.
Who was the vice chair before? Did somebody vacate? Somebody vacate?
No, the current chair was, yeah, who are my vice chair, whoever.
Yeah, okay, then you guys switched, right? You didn't.
No, I mean, I, I was first, he's second, now he's now, and...
But they shouldn't, it, it's weird that there's...
He was Michael before me.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's weird that I only did it.
That were offset, yeah, that you, and you have only been chair, vice chair for a year.
Yeah.
So who was your vice chair in her first year?
Uh, I guess...
Did you keep track of everybody's terms when they're up, Nancy? Or the city clerk's office does?
Brenda was elected on February 20th of last year, as vice chair. Why, why would, why did we only elect Brenda last year? Or did I get elected again last year?
Colin was also elected as chair last year on February 20th.
So is the term two years, or is it two consecutive one-year terms?
Colin. I think you should be about a year to do this.
We do elections every year for chair and vice chair.
But they are one-year terms then?
Correct.
They're not two-year terms.
Okay. Vicky can do this, but just historically, it's been, you could serve as chair for two years, so Colin was, Colin was elected year one, you could have, the commissions could have not reelected him the following year, he was available to be able to serve, unless Vicky is interpreting it differently, but that's how historically it has been done. So if Brenda was elected last year, it could have been somebody left, or you, the commission wanted to change in who the vice chair was, because perhaps it was Colin and he was, I don't know, I'd have to do some research, but...
I think, wasn't, wasn't Kate the vice chair?
That's what I was wondering.
I believe so, and she resigned.
Okay, so maybe it was Kate, okay.
That's what I said, it was Kate.
Okay, so then we can also then theoretically nominate Brenda for vice chair for her a second year in a row.
Yes. Any objections to this? Thank you.
Any objections?
I need a motion.
I move to nominate Brenda for vice chair.
Second.
I'm sorry, who was the second? Thank you, David.
I guess I still need, can we have a vote?
If you want to.
I would like to.
Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Aye.
Ms. Hubka?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Montiel?
Aye.
Mr. Ruddle?
Aye.
Mr. Kaplan?
Aye.
Mr. Renson?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerty?
Yes.
And Chair Martinez?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Yeah, kind of all joking aside, is Aaron now the actual chair and he finishes up the meeting? Okay, okay, yeah, that's right. Well, with that, congratulations, Aaron, congratulations, Brenda, good luck, we'll all be here to support you. With that, staff's choice. Brian?
Oh, sorry, it's attorney's choice, no, it is staff's choice. Nancy, I know there was something I was supposed to bring up, but I cannot remember what it was, I left my post-it note in my office.
Uh, just if we're gonna have a meeting next, do we know if we're gonna have a meeting next one, the next one will be, if we have a meeting at our next one, it's the week of President's Day, so it would be on that Wednesday, whatever that date is.
I was looking at the council agendas, and I didn't see when our next council comprehensive plan update was, so I was gonna check with you.
Oh, give me a minute, I can pull that up. Talk amongst yourselves, I've gotta, I've gotta go find it.
Or you can go to Vicky, if you have any.
Yeah, I'm going into...
Sure, I, I don't have any updates at this time.
Thank you, Vicky.
But do we think we're gonna have a meeting on the 19th?
I think we still had a few more items to get through. John, do you, are you okay if we meet on the 19th, or do you need more time to get all this information together?
Well, I don't think I'm gonna have a finish, I, it, it probably, it might be a stretch to get all of the things done, all of that goal, all of those policies reworked, it may be a stretch, but we could certainly maybe do, you know, maybe I could get certain portion of them done to re-present to the group, so that, you know, I could be flexible that way.
Would you rather, if we met again in two weeks, just go through the remaining new policies that the commission has, and then we put everything together after that? Rather than putting everything together, then getting more new policies, and then putting it together again? I mean, that might be my question for the group, John, as a whole. What would y'all rather see, that we bring it back, you know, revised, and then we still have room to revise again, or we revise it one time with all the new policies and then bring it back to you that way?
I guess, are there additional policies that people didn't have a chance to discuss today? I don't know that I really had any additional ones, is, I think we kind of discussed them all through. Is that what you're saying, Brenda, also?
No, I agree.
Yeah, okay, okay, yeah. So I, I don't know if there will be additional ones, I, I don't think so, I think the question becomes, if you need more than two weeks, and you prefer to have more than two weeks, I don't know that I'd want to force you to push it through, but I don't think we're gonna have any additional ones, is where I'm going, Brian.
I don't think we're gonna push John to get that all revised in two weeks, so maybe it comes back as part of the part four, we can just do a quick update on part three, and then work through the part four, maybe in March, or I think that's in March, later on in March, so we're not coming back in February.
So skip the next meeting, basically is what we're saying.
I think so, does that sound...
Uh, I'd, I'd rather, if we, if it's, there's an open meeting with nothing on it, I want the time.
Okay. Would you rather go then to the next section while you're working on this section, like, we can prep for the next section while you're still working on updating part three? And, John, it's up to you, whichever you'd like us to do, just let us know, and if you want to meet next time, we'll be there.
Okay.
All right, good.
Okay, so we'll be there on the 19th, which is a Wednesday.
Sounds good.
You'd like that, yeah, okay, done.
Okay, and then Brian, your question was, when, when's it going back to council for study session?
Yeah, I didn't have it on our council tracker.
April 14th, whoops, sorry, April 14th.
Our, our next scheduled one is in April?
And that's what I'm finding quickly.
Okay.
And then I think the other thing we were gonna mention was March 4th, right? You'll have a public hearing, a possible public hearing on a PUD, and then... You'll have a public hearing, a possible public hearing on a PUD, and then Hillary Portel from the EDDA, she's the Executive Director, will be presenting South Broadway Design Guidelines, so that'll be a March 4th meeting, that's why John was saying he's, he's gotten bumped, okay? I think that was it, Brian.
Thank you. And you also said we're gonna have another open house in March as well.
John, that's what date, March 18th?
March 18th, yeah.
Yeah, you should have gotten an invite for that today.
Great. Okay, Vicky, you're good, I'll go down, Commissioner's Choice, Carl. Commissioner's Choice, anything?
Nothing for me.
Cheryl?
I have nothing, thank you.
Dave?
Nope.
Brenda?
I'm good.
Erin?
Thanks, everybody, I'm excited to, to serve in this role, and look forward to all some more great work, thanks.
Nope.
Nothing for me.
And Eric?
Nothing further here either.
All right, Stephen?
No, I just wanna con, congratulate Erin.
Yeah.
Done a great job, I've learned a lot from her, too.
Yeah. Well, thanks, everyone, and with that, we will adjourn. All right.